With the primary election over, attention has turned to the general election in November. In Honolulu City Council District 6, which includes New Uanu, Kalihi, and downtown, Tyler Dos Santos Tam faces Tracy Toguchi in a runoff. In State House District 39, covering parts of Eva, Waipahu, and Kuniia, Democrat Corey Rosenly takes on Republican Elijah Perick. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Olenna Hu. Voters determined who advanced to the general election in the primary nearly two weeks ago. Tonight, we feature two races where there is no incumbent. All three of the open Honolulu City Council seats are heading to a runoff after none of the candidates managed to get 50% plus one of the vote in the primary. First, we focus on District 6, which includes New Uanu, Kalihi, and downtown Honolulu. Later on, we will sit down with the candidates looking to represent District 39 in the State House of Representatives, which covers Waipahu, Kuniia, and parts of Eva. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email us or call us with your questions. We also encourage you to get involved with the conversation over on our Facebook page. Now on to our guests. Tyler Dos Santos Tam is a lifelong resident of District 6. He is a graduate of Yale University. He served as the Chair of the Democratic Party of Hawaii for two years and served for six years as a member of the Liliha Neighborhood Board. He now sits on the Honolulu Neighborhood Commission. Tracy Toguchi was born in New Uanu and raised in Honolulu. For the last three years, she has served on the staff of current council member Carol Fukunaga as Legislative Analyst for District 6. She's a former Miss Hawaii and owns a small business that provides entertainment, marketing, and legal services. Thank you for joining us tonight. Let's dive in. So both of you, if elected, would be newcomers to politics. Why run now? Tracy, we'll start with you.
The constituents since last year had encouraged me to run. They were concerned that Councilmember Carol Fukunaga would be terming out, she would be unable to run again for the seat, and she has so much history with this district. So they had encouraged me to run. I really thought about it. I looked at the other candidates, and no one else obviously works in the District 6 office to know the issues. So I have the institutional knowledge, and no one has current city experience. So it was really for practical reasons and to truly help the constituents.
Well, having been born and raised in the district, I grew up on the same street as Natsanoya Teahouse, and having served on the Liliha Neighborhood Board for six years, I've seen how our community has changed, not just over the past few years, but throughout my lifetime. And I think it's time for a leader to stand up and really fight for our community's best interests, whether that's crime, homelessness, or affordable housing. And throughout my career here at home, we've really worked hard to address these issues. And having co-founded High Good Neighbor, having tackled the monster home issue, having been an advocate for affordable housing, I think I'm ready to serve our community as our council member.
If elected, what would you address first?
Well, top three issues, definitely crime, homelessness, and affordable housing. As I go door to door, I hear neighbors' concerns about these things. Housing is one that's really important, I think, to me and the community. And on day one, I'm ready to start working to break down the barriers to creating affordable housing. I really want to focus on creating affordable rental housing because it's a huge, huge need all throughout our district, and also work with DPP to make sure that everyone who's building housing is following the rules.
And Tracy, what would you want to address first?
That would be crime, housing issues. So that would be homelessness, houselessness, affordable housing, as well as large-scale single-family dwellings. So that'd be monster houses, as well as transportation. So that's traffic and pedestrian safety and road conditions. And that's because in the office, these are the issues that constituents raise as concerns. And of course, as I've been campaigning, I've been encountering the same concerns as well.
And just want to encourage our viewers, if you have a question, please call in, email, or leave a comment on our Facebook page. Talking a little bit more about monster homes in Kalihi, what is the impact that it has on the neighborhood, and what can be done about it?
Well, it changes the character of the neighborhoods. And so for families who are just trying to live their lives, just go home and just trying to relax and enjoy their time with their families, or having a difficult time doing that due to interruptions, the impacts not only to street parking, on-street parking, trash, and just the concerns about suspicious individuals or others that they don't know about. So this is a concern that also impacts beyond Kalihi throughout District 6.
Well, having founded, co-founded High Good Neighbor, which has been the group that's been at the forefront of advocating on this issue, we've gone to the Planning Commission and gotten them to adopt new rules restricting the density of these homes to make sure that they're, as Tracy mentions, not impacting their neighbors, not taxing our local infrastructure, and also, again, making sure the DPP is really following through on the permits, making sure that the contractor's working on it or following all the rules. This is something that I'd like to take to the City Council and keep pushing on. We really need clear action. I've gotten so many calls from constituents and neighbors all throughout the island through High Good Neighbor complaining that the city needs to step up. And if you're elected to the council, I'm going to push to do that.
What would you do, Tracy, if the house that was next to you was a alleged drug house?
Well, I actually encounter constituent issues, concerns about similar issues. And I contact the HPD. There's Narco Vice that we also are in communication with, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and they are very quick to take action. And so we've been able to address these concerns.
Tyler, what would you do as a City Council member?
Yep. Well, first of all, neighbors who suspect some things wrong use common sense. And also, keep a detailed journal or notes of what's going on, who's coming and going, what kinds of vehicles. This is really helpful to help, as Tracy mentioned, Narco Vice to do their job. But really, this is going to come down to making sure that we fill those 300 vacancies at HPD. This is going to make sure, this is going to come down to making sure that we're working with our prosecutor's office. A lot of these are repeat offenders. We need to make sure that the prosecutor's office has the resources and tools they need to really crack down on these folks. And again, it comes down to our neighbors as well coming together and saying enough is enough in our community.
Tyler, some people say that Kalihi has high crime. Do you agree, and what can be done to reduce that?
Yeah, I mean, crime is on the rise all throughout the district. In fact, I was in Chinatown the other day where somebody got shot. And it's very sad, and it's really symptomatic of the fact that we need leaders who are going to go in there, roll their sleeves up, and help to tackle these issues by, again, supporting HPD, making sure that they have the resources. The 300 vacancies did not appear overnight. This has been an ongoing issue, and we need to get in front of that, and that's going to take resources. There's a lot of federal funding now available for policing around the country, and we need to make sure we get every single dollar that we can here at home. And in particular neighborhoods, we need to make sure that we're encouraging HPD to get there on patrol, either on foot or in vehicles.
Tracy?
Actually, speaking to the vacancies issues, actually, I was working since last year when I started hearing about it from the departments because we see it firsthand, working in the legislative branch. And so when we're seeking to address constituent issues, we're finding that those who are knowledgeable with the institutional knowledge to be able to help us are no longer there. And so I started to make inquiries. I talked with the mayor and his administration. I talked with the departments, talked with City Council members. And so they started asking questions, and that's how we thankfully have been able to get to this point, where we're really looking at it and looking at ways to address it.
All right. We do have a question from a viewer. One is directed at you, Tracy, and the other is directed at you, Tyler. So Tracy, Max says, "You worked for Carol Fukunaga. Are you just one of the same establishment politics or politicians?"
No. I've been in her office for the last two years, and I've been working for the City Council and the City County of Honolulu since January of 2018. So my background is from the private sector, actually. I did work at the state legislature. I lived in New York City and Los Angeles, so I do understand metropolitan life, urban living. Obviously, I was born and primarily raised in Honolulu. So the answer is no. I seek to bring the private sector customer service to city government and so that I can exceed expectations and show the public that they can expect that kind of service from the city.
All right. Thank you. And Tyler, a question from Max as well. "You are an active lobbyist for the Hawaii Regional Council of carpenters and other trade unions. Are you hoping to influence rail the same way?"
So for the record, I'm not a registered lobbyist with them anymore. But to that point, rail, let's be clear, rail is a mess, and it's a challenging situation. It's going to be up to the next set of City Council members to get into the details. We need somebody in there who understands the construction industry, who's going to be willing to ask the tough questions about the change orders, about how we're going to move forward. On the West Side, we're starting to see the piers cracking, and we really need somebody who's going to get in there and get to the bottom of this and really push. And that's something that I'd like to bring to the council.
What do you see as far as an end date for rail?
That's something that we're going to have to ask heart, and they're going to have to answer that. We're going to have to bring them before us and really dive in. These dates keep shifting, the interim service date keeps shifting, and at the end of the day, we need some confidence that the folks at heart, the folks in charge, have a plan. And if they don't have one, we're going to have to work with stakeholders throughout the community to develop one.
And Tracy, your thoughts about rail?
I just wanted to just add, so I do know the rail project pretty intimately. I worked as an information specialist too there for about a year and a half. So my job was to know the facts about rail, how we got there, and to educate the public, and obviously, and to seek to address their concerns. And so I would be looking to do that, continue to do that as a City Council member for this district.
What are your thoughts about when it might be done, or maybe hopes?
Well, that is really, that is a concern. That would be up to those who are in authority now. And there are many factors, as you can see, that's happening. To me, safety is the most important, quality and obviously timeliness of the completion. And we need to look at maximizing the utility of it.
And talking a little bit more about transportation within your community, there's always potholes and lots of roadwork. And Tyler, what would you say are the major priorities in terms of transportation within the district?
Yeah, well, top three things for roads. We need to get all of our roads onto a basic maintenance schedule because I meet constituents who streets haven't been paved for 20 to 30 years, and they're begging and pleading for that to happen. We also need to, as plenty people point out, make sure that our roadwork contractors are living up to those standards. And if they're not, we're going to have to look at how we procure future roadwork projects. Finally, the bus is a huge lifeline in our district, and I'm a bus rider myself, and that's something that we're going to have to work on. And going back to rail, we don't even have the answer on how the bus and rail system is going to be integrated once it starts operating. These are basic things that our City Council members need to get answers on, on behalf of the constituents, and that's exactly what I'm going to do as a council member.
I just wanted to note, so the City Department of Transportation Services has been working and looking at the multimodal on transportation designs. So I know that they've been working on that. As far as potholes, again, going back to the city vacancies issue, so we have essentially two crews that go out and have to fill these potholes. So they're doing the best that they can, and obviously, as a City Council member and as a staff member, I'm always seeking to try to address that issue.
All right. Thank you. Bernie from Kamehameha Heights says, "How will these candidates address corruption in the DPP? Not just look at it, but what actions would each take?"
I would say that I think looking at ways that, through the Ethics Commission, we have training as city workers. And so I think looking at educating staff, and perhaps more frequent education, and looking at cases so that we can give firsthand, I guess, examples as to what to do and what not to do. And just that reminder, I work closely with DPP. We work very closely with the inspectors, and a lot of them work really hard. And it's unfortunate that they're getting branded with others who have unfortunately taken the wrong turn. But there's a morale issue, and so, again, part of the City Council, I seek to give them encouragement because I do believe that they're doing a great job, and we can just try to help them, all of us, to remember what we're there for, and it's for the public.
Having worked on the monster home issue for years, I mean, we've seen firsthand how corruption at DPP has allowed a lot of these permits to slip through the cracks, how the third-party review system has allowed projects which otherwise wouldn't be approved to sail through. And a lot of neighbors throughout this campaign have raised a lot of questions to me. And so we're going to go into DPP and not just look at an issue, but do a few things. So first is, we need to get as much permit data and information online and accessible in a transparent way to the public so they understand what's going on and can catch any things that seem to be awry. The second thing is, DPP, to their credit, needs more resources to expedite some of their processes and get it online in an electronic format instead of shuffling paper around where things can kind of fall through the cracks. And finally, this is something where, as Tracy mentioned, we do need to work with the Ethics Commission, but at the end of the day, it's up to the managers and the director of the department to really lay down the law and say, "This is not tolerable, and we need to do better."
I had to submit something to DPP not too long ago, and they asked me to put it on a CD. And we were like, "How do we do that nowadays?" All right, so moving on, let's talk a little bit about corruption. It's been a topic, a hot topic in terms of government, and a lot of people are looking for new blood, and some people might say that they'll see that in you. What is it that you would do to try to fight corruption in government?
Yeah, well, as I mentioned, it's going to be an across-the-board effort, and it's going to start with the departments. There are a lot of departments where it's sometimes up to the whims of an inspector. I mean, we're seeing that right now with the Liquor Commission as well, where if the inspector has this broad authority, there is a rightness there. And so we need to streamline the department's internal processes, get as much utilization of technology as possible. So all of these decision points and all of the data that they use to make those decisions is readily available when there's a paper trail. And finally, I think that we should work with our Ethics Commission to look at increasing fines, and as the legislature did recently, those who were found guilty of corruption, look at ways that we can make it hurt for them and look at punishments that are going to be commensurate with violating the public trust.
I think we need to hold people accountable for their actions, seek to remind people again why we're there. We're public servants, and the effort is to be accountable and transparent. And that includes the hiring process, as well as the daily work environment, so for people to be able to know that they're being watched, they're being evaluated, and the public helps us to do that.
What does the homeless or houseless look like in your district at the moment?
There is definitely an issue throughout the district. I personally live in downtown Honolulu and walk out of my building and see that. And I know constituents say that, "How can we continue to just step over people? And is that really humane?" And so I believe that, yes, we are doing a disservice. Obviously, civil rights are important, but we also need to look at taking care of people and helping people get back integrated into society. I feel that sometimes maybe people feel that they've just been an outcast because of their situation and for whatever reason, not counting those who are extremely mentally ill, but those who maybe just cannot hold down a job, or maybe for some reason their temperament, they cannot really relate to people in order to even go to school and take a class. So I think it's up to us to try to help them integrate back in society and give them dignity, some clean clothes to wear, a place to put their paperwork so that they can go to a job or take a class and not feel embarrassed, but feel like they're good, they feel good about themselves and what they can do for society.
All throughout our district, we have encampments that people have raised to me, and I've seen firsthand. I mean, down in Palama, there's one in front of several apartment buildings. It's been there for years and years and years, and the neighbors have called and called and called, and seemingly, nothing's going on. And we're starting to see homeless encampments spread in areas where they didn't have them before, at the base of Pacific Heights, underneath the bridges of New Uanu Stream, and in some of the parks in Kalihi Valley. And so what it's going to come down to is, we're going to have to do a few things. First and foremost, I'd like to expand, start expanding the core program, which has worked really well in Chinatown, and this is pairs of social workers who go around and interact with the homeless folks, learn their needs, help pair them with the social programs that they may need to address their issues. We need to expand that beyond Chinatown, where it's just a pilot program. So that's going to be one of the first things that I work on. Secondly, Housing First is a huge component of this, and I'm sure we're going to talk about affordable housing in a future question, but this is something that we're going to have to work on as well, and really accelerate the use of city lands and utilize some underutilized properties to get to more Housing First units. And the final thing is, we've got to work with our state and federal partners on this. There's a lot of funding available now, so let's grab every dollar because if we don't grab it here, some other city on the mainland's going to get it, and we really need to put it to work here in Hawaii.
All right. Well, as you mentioned, let's talk about affordable housing and what your vision or some of your ideas might be.
Yeah, so first and foremost, again, affordable rentals is a huge missing piece of our housing ecosystem here, and I really want to focus in on solving that problem. As an advocate in the community, I've personally testified at the City Council to support senior housing in places like Chinatown, to expand the Section 8 program at the legislature to make sure that tax-exempt projects and projects that take public funding are utilizing that, accept Section 8 housing. And also, I've been at the legislature as the chief advocate for the program to expand the general excise tax credits for affordable rental construction. On the city side, we need to break down the affordable, the barriers to creating affordable housing, breaking down the regulatory barriers. We've talked about some of the processes at DPP, which also we need to look at. And then we also need to make sure, again, that we're utilizing city lands in a way that's going to help the people who need it most. And so we really want to look at that, especially as rail comes into town. We talk about TOD. We need to make that happen, not just for rich offshore investors, but people here who want to live right next to rail line.
Thank you. And Tracy, your thoughts?
Yes, so there are affordable housing renters and homeowners, so looking at addressing those concerns. And for our constituents, many of them are on fixed incomes, seniors, and so they have concerns about being able to still afford the real property taxes and be able to stay there and pass it on to their family for future generations. So how can we help them? Looking at different ways of incentivizing affordable housing development and looking at impediments with the existing laws and policies.
All right. Thank you. We do have a question from Cardenas in Kalihi. "What ways will you ensure there will be less youth getting into prisons, and how will you prevent school-to-prison pipeline?" What ways will you ensure that there will be less youth getting into prison?
So from the city perspective, I would look at the weed and seed programs. There's the component with the community revitalization, and so that includes youth programs and ways to get at-risk youth into programs in which they feel like, again, so that they're contributing to society and they feel like an active member.
And this, again, comes down to community policing. And as we work with HPD to fill those vacancies, I think there's other things that we can do to make sure that when troubled youth get into issues, that it's not just going straight to prison, that there's some sort of rehabilitation program along the way. I know Steve Alm, the prosecutor, has worked really hard on that, not just with weed and seed, but some of the innovative programs that he started as a judge and is continuing at the prosecutor's office. At the end of the day, also, the city just created a youth commission, and I think it comes down to listening to young people as well and seeing their ideas to make sure that there are programs available in our parks to get them off the street, get them out of trouble, give them something fun to do after school, and get them away from sort of the insidious things that we see in the community like drug use and other things that young people can fall victim to.
Some say that a new landfill needs to be created, and some propose that your district should have it. What are your thoughts about that?
Well, you know, Act 73, the legislature passed that in 2020, and that basically restricts a city to three different places where a landfill can be. Luckily, it's not in our district. But for wherever it's going to be, whether that's in Pu'pu'ke'a, which is one of those sites, or in Kuniia, or Central Oahu, whatever district has that, there needs to be some community benefit to it. I feel very bad that the West Side has been a dumping ground for this for so long, and that's not fair to them. We do need to work to reduce the amount of opala that we generate here, whether that's reducing the amount of trash that we put out, increasing recycling programs. I mean, that's what it's going to come down to. But we are going to have to make some hard decisions based on the constraints.
Thank you. What are your thoughts about a new landfill?
Generally, I obviously would not support it in our district, but I would be open to looking at other ways to address that issue. It would start with just our everyday use of waste. And so it may not be that the answer is another landfill, may be that there are other alternatives.
What is your thought about education within your district? And do you think there are enough schools? Are they supported?
Well, for the jurisdiction of the city and county of Honolulu, rather than the state, which includes the State Department of Education. So from the city perspective, we do everything that we can to encourage the youth to be active and involved and to hopefully live in thriving neighborhoods. And so I support that.
You know, the city needs to work with all of our schools. We've got a bunch of elementary and middle schools in our district, and that means working on things like safe routes to school, making sure that kids who walk to school can get there safely with sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian type of improvements. This also means the city runs summer fund for the kids during the summer, and this is a great program that we've done for years and years. It got shut down during COVID. Now that we're back, we've got to really make sure that those programs are high-quality for our Kiki and our community.
All right. We're running out of time. Any last comment that you'd like to make?
Well, Olenna, thank you for moderating. Thank you to PBS, and of course, to the viewers out there. I'd like to ask for your vote in this year's election. We've got a lot of work to do on housing, homelessness, and crime, and let's take some action, and let's get it done.
And Tracy?
Thank you so much to PBS, and thank you so much to the viewers and for your questions and your concerns. And I've been working in this office. I know the district issues. I care very much about these constituents, and I believe that they know that, and I will continue to help them and do everything that I can. I work a lot, and my paralegal background definitely helps read through the ordinance. I can identify loopholes, and I can really continue to help the constituents of this district.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. We would like to thank our guests, the candidates for Honolulu City Council District 6, Tracy Toguchi and Tyler Dos Santos Tam. As we get ready for our next segment featuring State House District 39, enjoy this hikino story about downtown Honolulu.
Chinatown was in pretty dire straits at that time, and this organization was one of the arts organizations that was ignited here to help turn around the neighborhood.
As for being located in the heart of downtown Chinatown, the Arts at Mark's Garage has faced many challenges.
I think for some people, there may be a negative stigma that's associated with a lot of downtown urban areas, but that's also partially due to policies, housing, and different things that are happening that aren't necessarily setting up all the right resources for the people that are in Chinatown.
The Arts at Mark's Garage is an art gallery, a performance space, and a coop for artists.
My theory is, when you really meet the community's need, that community is going to support what you're doing.
Just part of the program is giving people a voice to talk about their project and the issues and their perspectives, and that's what I see the Arts at Mark's doing.
Some of our artists have shown their works in higher-end galleries, and when they come here, they get a different crowd of people seeing their art. We give them access to downtown Chinatown. You know, we all benefit when we have art in our lives. Even if you are not coming here, you know someone who is coming here and experiencing art.
By providing the platform for artist collaboration, Arts has revived the energy in downtown.
If you look at some of the paintings around here, some of these may be done by people in your neighborhood.
There's also a very large group of people that want to ensure that Chinatown continues to thrive.
It should be a place that you and your family and friends come to every weekend because you know there's going to be something new and different happening there.
With no sign of slowing down, Arts will continue to be the canvas for the community. I'm Luke Nakahoro from Oahu High School for Hikino.
Aloha and welcome back to Insights on PBS Hawaii. We are now joined by the Republican and Democratic candidates for Hawaii State House District 39. Now, that includes Royal Kuniia, Waipahu, Makakilo, Westlock, and Honouliuli. Let's meet our guests. Republican Elijah Perick was raised in Eva Beach. He currently serves as a chaplain and ethics committee member for hospice. He is an officer in the Air Force Reserves and a pastor at New Hope. He has also volunteered as a counselor in the Kapale Youth Detention Center. Welcome Democrat Corey Rosenly. He is a longtime West Side Oahu resident. He has been a social studies teacher at Campbell High School for the last 16 years. From 2015 to 2021, he served as the president of the Hawaii Teachers Association, where he worked to increase education spending and teacher pay. So welcome. Let's dive right in. You know, a lot of people are going to be talking about this particular seat as Ty Cullen, the representative, is now awaiting sentencing for his federal bribery case. And so let's send it over to Corey first to tell us how you're going to go about changing the perspective of your constituents after having someone that's representing them fall, essentially, fall from grace.
Well, the answer is pretty obvious. We need to get money out of politics, and there are great programs going on across the country right now in order to do that. In Maine, what they're doing is, is that if you can get 80 people to give you $5... In Maine, what they're doing is, is that if you can get 80 people to give you $5, your campaign is publicly financed. In Seattle right now, what they're doing is they're giving people $100 with a voucher so that the people have a choice of how to be able to help out and pick out their candidates. You know, the problem we have too often is, is that big money gets involved. And what happened with the corruption scandal in both my district and with Kalani English's district is that there's this sort of idea within the system that if people give you money, you get something in return. And we need to get rid of that so that it's fair for everyone.
All right, thank you. Elijah?
Aloha, Alana. Thank you, Corey. Thank you, PBS, for having me here. To answer the question, we need to look at what happened recently. Ty took a bribe, and it shocked me, it shocked many people because we voted for him. We trusted him, and he succumbed to the party at power right now. So what can we do about it? We need somebody in office who has an ethical background that says, this is right and this is wrong. Serving in our military, I've held leaders accountable, squadron commanders saying, sir, ma'am, this isn't a good idea. We need to change the course of action to what's going on. We need to adjust. As an ethics committee member in hospice, I get to advise families on the decisions of what's going on, the implications of what they're deciding. And as a pastor, I answer to a higher calling, so I'm ready to serve our people.
Have you done anything differently or maybe a little bit more litigious because of the bribery incident when it comes to your fundraising?
Can you explain?
Like, maybe there was a lesson to be learned? So you, you know, you make sure to dot all the i's and cross all the t's properly?
Yes, I'm faithful to file all of my campaign spending reports in a timely manner. I'm combing through the people that do give donations to make sure that there's nothing, there's no conflicts of interest, that I get to be a people's person, a servant of our people.
All right, and Corey?
You know, a lot of people that have donated to my campaign are teachers. It's a very humbling experience that people that work so hard to make a living are willing to say that they believe in you. And I'll tell you, there are some days you might be tired and you don't want to go out campaigning. And I remember about all those people that have said they're willing to take those efforts to try to help you. And so I think that having so much community support really drives me in trying to run for this campaign.
Thank you. And just want to remind our viewers that we're taking your questions. You can call, email, or log into our Facebook page as well. So, you know, you guys represent West Oahu, and obviously that is the next growing city, right? They've been saying that for many, many years. How do you deal with the population increase and also the traffic increase?
Traffic is a problem. For anyone that's had to live on our side of the island, trying to commute for over an hour is a huge problem. So there are specific things that we can do to try to alleviate the traffic problem. One of the things that I would recommend and something that I would fight for is we need to expand the zipper lanes all the way out to Kapolei in the morning to two lanes, and do a reverse zipper lane coming back in the afternoon. This is something that would help alleviate part of the traffic problem. The other thing is, there's great technology occurring right now when it comes to artificial traffic lights. And for people that oftentimes sitting at a traffic light when there's no one there, there is technology that potentially helped that. And that's something that I would try to work to try to bring to my community.
Elijah?
Thank you, Alana. I remember sitting in traffic just getting here to the studio today. It's frustrating to be right in front of the other car, just thinking to yourself, when is that light going to turn green? When is the exit lane going to open up? So let's look at a voucher system for carpooling. Let's look at ways that people can go to work at a time that's more conducive for less traffic. There's some companies that invite their employees in at 10:00 a.m., and then they leave at 6:00 p.m. It's when the traffic's less cumbersome.
Why are you running?
That's a great question, Alana. I've, for my whole life, desired to be a public servant. This inside motivation to say, I want to help people. For my whole life, I've been working with volunteers, nonprofits, working for ministries, working with groups that say, let's make a better future for us. Let's make a better future for our Keiki, for our kapuna. Running for office is simply seeing a bigger picture of how can we serve people? And if that's why, I want to be a public servant.
So just this week, I was sitting with two teachers, my fellow teachers at Campbell High School. Both of them are very pregnant and about to give birth soon, and we started having conversation about paid family leave. And all of us were shocked that a program that is basically done throughout the entire world is something that we do not have here in the United States or here in Hawaii. And these are things that really impact people. So one of the things that's making me run is there's good policies that have happened from around the world in our country, even here in Hawaii, things that would truly make a difference in people's lives. So I'm running to try to help those two teachers and other people in my community by taking actions that would truly improve their lives.
Do you believe that the infrastructure is set up that, you know, the continued increase in population will be able to keep up, you know, infrastructure-wise?
There is a, if you live on our side of the island, there is an infrastructure problem. But let me give you an example of something that we should be doing a better job at. Rail is a huge problem on our side of the island, and we've seen overruns and overruns. But something like rail is not just about traffic, but also something about affordable housing. You can get an affordable house in Ho'opili, but the problem is, is that if you want to be able to afford something, you've got to spend all that time in traffic as well. So one of the things I want to do if elected is I want to make sure that we hold Hart accountable, to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place so that people spend less time in traffic and are able to afford a house, afford affordable house.
Can you clarify the question?
Do you feel that the region is infrastructurally sound for this population boom?
That's a good question. We look at the neighborhood of Ho'opili. It's been there for about three years, and it's going to expand for several more years. It keeps growing and growing. We've got residents that have lived in Village Park and Royal Kuni'a and Westlock for many years, and some of them work in the area, Eva, Kapolei, Mililani. And so the traffic isn't as bad for them, but yes, we have a lot of people that live in Townside, and when they're driving from town to Ho'opili, can it sustain that current population? Right now, it's working, and hopefully the rail will get on track and alleviate traffic so that we can sustain that population.
And you both have brought up rail, so obviously it's a hot topic that you're passionate about. What is it that you will do to ensure that rail is complete?
That's a good question, Alana. So if we look at the rail right now, they're trying to get it open from Kapolei to the stadium by the end of this year. So what can I do to help make sure that it is complete? Let's keep them accountable at their timelines. Let's keep them accountable at the budget that was agreed upon over 10 years ago. Let's get them moving.
Rail has now gotten up to $12 billion, and it's become almost a blank check without accountability. That cannot go on forever. And one of the things it has to be is we have to move that responsibility. Right now, the agency is under the city, but it's being funded by the state. So having the two separate groups look at it is causing the problems, and it cannot be a blank check. So one of the things that I think needs to occur is that it needs to move back to the city-county, and there needs to be a longer conversation about how it's actually funded.
All right, we've got questions coming in from your viewers. One is from Janice. She says, do the candidates have any ideas to protect seniors from physical attacks or cyber attacks, such as new laws or stiffer penalties for the perpetrators?
You know, my father is getting up there in age, and, you know, we have had times where we've had to take care of him. So taking care of our kapuna is a huge problem that we have to do. There has been legislation proposed that needs to be followed up, and one of the things I fully support is paid family leave. And paid family leave allows family members to go at home and spend time with their kapuna. Right now, we don't even have a system like that. If people cannot afford to be able to take off to take care of their family members. So one of the things that's very important is that we paid, passed paid family leave so that we can have people at home, their family, to be able to help.
The question, do the candidates have any ideas to protect seniors from physical attacks or cyber attacks, such as new laws or stiffer penalties for perpetrators?
That's a great question. Thank you for calling in to ask that question. So I've served, and I'm currently serving, in the Hawaii reservists. And so we go through training on how to be safe in the world of cyber, how to be safe in locking our house, how to be safe in locking our cars, how to not be too present on social media to give the enemy or a perpetrator an idea of what are our patterns. We can educate our kapuna on how to be safe and the way they talk to not disclose private information. We can help our kapuna by educating the children on how they can tell their grandparents or grandmas, this is how it's best to operate. This is how it's best to stay safe and to not be harmed. One of the great things we have about Hawaii is a strong justice system that needs to get stronger. And if we have stricter laws that deter punishment, or I should say deter wrongdoing, that will decrease the crime.
All right, another question from Keola from Eva Beach. What are your views on legalizing gambling?
Thank you, Keola, for the question. What are my views on legalizing gambling? So if we look at it from two perspectives, one is if we legalize it, it's going to maybe help the economy. But let's look at the other downfall part. It's going to hurt the economy because it brings in other practices that are harmful to our neighborhoods, harmful to our kids. When we look at the past House sessions, they try to propose bills that will legalize gambling, but they never pass hearings, they never get voted yea, and these representatives are representing the people, and the people are saying they don't want gambling. I do not support the legalization of gambling in Hawaii.
What is your stance?
So when I was president of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, people often came up to me and suggested that one way to solve the not having enough funding for education was to do a lottery. And that was something I was always opposed to because the lottery, what it truly is, is a regressive tax. 50% of all revenue generated from a lottery targets the bottom 20% of income earners. And I think there's one area where I potentially could support. I've seen new opportunity with sports gambling, but even then, I have deep concerns that basically what we're doing is exacerbating poverty by taxing people at the lower end of the economic scale.
A lot of people talk about affordable housing and homelessness or houselessness. And what are your thoughts about how you would implement assisting people that are having trouble getting into homes?
So two big issues. One is the affordable housing, and the other one is homelessness. So on the affordable housing issue, the first thing we have to look at is all of the supply that's being taken off of the market. Right now, 25% to 33% of all new home purchases in Hawaii are actually bought by people that do not live in Hawaii. You have another 10% to 20% of homes that are purchased by people, military families, who would do much better if they could actually be on bases. We have 27,000 native Hawaiians still waiting for native Hawaiian homelands, and we still have in Hawaii a huge problem of illegal Airbnbs. When you combine all of these together, it's a lot of land and homes being taken off of the market. If we do that, we truly bring down the cost. Now, on the homelessness issue, the biggest problem we're facing with homeless right now is we have about 2,000 unsheltered homeless in Hawaii. My daughter is a sophomore at UH Manoa. The dorm that she is in right now, Freeer Hall, costs $70 million to build 800 single-room dormitories. If we were to do a larger-scale program like that, we could truly get homeless into shelters. And there's a great program called Housing First that's shown great success across the country and across the world, that once you bring them into this housing, you're able to provide services like mental health, like drug therapy. And these will truly end, truly help a lot of our homeless.
Thank you. And Elijah, your thoughts about, first, affordable housing, and then, second, homelessness?
Yeah, thank you, Alana. I remember when my brother told me, Elijah, I'm moving off the island because it's too expensive here. So he and his small business left to California. I remember when my younger sister and her husband and their two daughters said, yeah, we can't afford it anymore. We're going to the mainland. And they went to Washington State. I cried because my family was being separated. I understand firsthand the problem of housing in Hawaii. So what can we do about it? Let's bring back the super ferry to bring trade that has an inter-island working together. Let's work with the congressional officers and politicians to modify the Jones Act so Hawaii can then trade with other countries to bring resources that build more affordable housing. Let's eliminate the excise tax on necessities like food, gasoline, Medicare, short-term rentals, so that we have more money to buy housing. Let's talk about the homeless issue. I remember walking through the streets and just getting down on the ground and talking to these people, what's going on with you? Why are you here? What can I do to help? I would go to the grocery store and buy them food and help them. I remember giving Craig my phone number, and Craig would call me, you know, on the streets saying, Elijah, what's going on? Can you help me? We need to help these people. They need our help. At the same time, let's look at Westlock. They have a homeowners association that pays for people to have a beautiful neighborhood, and sometimes homeless come into there and they're trespassing, they're loitering. We need to enforce the vacancy laws and have a security presence protecting our residents. For the homeless that aren't trying to break the law but just need help, we can offer them medical support through the universities. The interns can practice and treat them and diagnose them. The nonprofits can educate, train them, and rehabilitate them back into our communities and back into our families.
Thank you. Moving on to another topic, where is agriculture on your list of priorities and farming?
Well, one of the things I supported when I was president of HSTA is the whole movement of trying to do farm to school. And this was trying to encourage more of our local produce to bring into our schools. We've often seen, oftentimes, that we've seen big corporations come into Hawaii and be using our agricultural land, not to actually produce crops for our families to eat, but to basically use this as an experimental place that they can just do their experiments on agriculture. So I think what we need to do as a priority is we need to go back to our land to try to produce more agriculture in the state of Hawaii that would mean less travel time coming from other places and that our families could actually eat.
My brother-in-law worked with agriculture and aquaponics, and it was his joy to take care of the land and get his hands dirty and to get inside those patches. It was important for him to take care of the land. We need to preserve our agricultural lands, and we need to have long-term leases on the lands that are producing good crops. We need to make sure that not all the land goes to housing, but some of it is preserved so that Hawaii can be self-sustainable, and we can eat the food grown in our own backyards.
As a Republican, do you feel that you would be at a disadvantage if elected?
That's a great question. Hawaii has, right now, a power system of Democrats, and I love everybody, but sometimes there's corruption when you have absolute power. We need a two-party system in Hawaii, and we can do that through electing more Republicans.
And as a Democrat, do you feel that you're at an advantage?
You know, having worked with the legislature for years, any person that works in that building understands that Democrats is a big umbrella. And within that umbrella, there are conservative Democrats and there are liberal Democrats. And if it was just so easy that having this one-party control would get all these priorities across, you know, it would be a lot easier, but it's not. So I do believe within the Democratic Party, there's a big range of views, and I still believe there are good policies that had been passed nationally by Congress and Democrats that we should bring here to Hawaii.
Elijah, what is your take on crime in your district, and what kind of plan do you have to try to tackle it?
Yeah, thank you, Alana, for asking the question. When going door-to-door to meet our neighbors, the biggest thing that they're saying in Waipahu is crime. Going door-to-doors, specifically in Harborview, I remember somebody said, Elijah, if you can get elected, I'd like crime to go down. Specifically, in my front porch, like, right there on the driveway, somebody shot somebody else in their front yard. That's unacceptable, and we can't have that happening in Waipahu. So what we can do is fund the police. We need to let the security do their job and keep us safe.
So in the household I grew up, my father started a program called Adult Friends for Youth, and this worked with troubled youth, sometimes gang youth, kids that had often been arrested. And I often worked with these kids. And when you sat down with them, one of the things you realize is they're just kids. Too often, our society would rather throw away someone and spend $80,000 a year to incarcerate them. But a program like my dad had at Adult Friends for Youth, for $5,000 a year, you could actually turn these kids around and make them productive parts of our society. So I think if we really want to start, solve the crime problem in Hawaii, we need to start from the beginning and try as best as we can to help people so they don't go to crime in the first place.
It's been argued that Oahu needs another prison. What would you say if folks rallied to have it in your district?
Well, take the one problem. I do not think that anyone want a prison in their district. And we have to recognize the same thing that I just talked about before, is that incarcerating people for long periods of time not only doesn't solve our problems. Hawaii has a recidivism rate of about 80%. We're failing not only to rehabilitate people that are in prison, but the second problem is, is that by not doing something when they're in prison, they're just going to come out and create more crime. There have been successful programs. One that comes to mind is what happens in Germany, is that you have to recognize that when people are in jail, it could be mental health issues, it could be poverty. There's a lot of things that go into it. You are not going to solve the problem of every person is there. But we need to change our philosophy, that the best thing we can do is, like I said, do is, like I said, is try to stop them from going to prison in the beginning, and while they're there, trying to actually rehabilitate them. And by doing so, we're actually going to reduce crime in our society.
What are your thoughts about a prison in your district?
That's a great question. I've helped for years our keiki in the Kapole Juvenile Detention Facility, sitting down with them, asking them, "What brought you here? How can I help you while you're here? And how can I help you never come back to this facility?" They would often tell me how their families were broken, how their dad was absent, how the school systems, how there was room for improvement in the school systems for them to never lead in that direction. What we can do is talk to them while they're there in the institution, say, "Don't ever come back here. This is not a place you want to be." What we can do is work better in the school systems to say, "You don't ever want to go to the Kapole Juvenile Detention Facility." And we can work more with our nonprofits to educate the youth, saying, "There's better alternatives. You can volunteer your time to help people instead of harming people."
What would you say is the number-one issue of concern that you have or that you're hearing from your constituents?
Yeah. So, having gone door-to-door for well over a month and beyond, it's an honor to hear people when I ask them, "If I get elected, what can I do for you? How can I serve you?" Oftentimes, there's a diversity of input, and sometimes, there's really a symphony of one sound, and that often is crime and the economy. Specifically, in Harborview, Village Park, Royal Cunea, and Oasis Town Homes, crime is the highest. It's less in Westlock and Ho'opili.
So, I've had a chance to visit a lot of homes in our district. I've probably talked to over 1,000 people. And the issue that's brought up the most is actually cost of living. I remember sitting down with one father in my district, and he was talking about both of his kids. They're not able to afford living in Hawaii, and they're moving off to Nevada. And he was trying to say, "What can we do to try to help this?" And so, there are policies that we can pass that will truly help our people in our district. We've already talked in some degree about affordable housing. But there's programs that I truly support, things like such as paid family leave, childcare tax credits, universal preschool, even making college free. The Alice report that came out that looked at the cost burden of people in Hawaii, you don't think of something like childcare being a huge cost, but it is. If we can provide help for these people, not only are we lowering their cost of living, but we're providing opportunity for these children of all economic levels to have a better life.
If you were elected, what would be the first bill that you would introduce?
To fund security and to decrease taxes, so eliminate, excuse me, eliminate excise tax on necessities and to fund security.
I've said this multiple times, and I'll say it again. Every country around the world, except for the United States, has paid family leave. It is an unbelievable mistake that in our state and in our country, that a woman gives birth and has to not have any type of security of income. That is just something that is so wrong, and that would be my first priority.
Do you think that as one person, you can make that difference for the state?
So, we've gotten to a point in our state where paid family leave has come up multiple times, and it just can't get over the hurdle. So, yes, I'm hoping I could be that vote. I can work with other people in the legislature to finally get this to pass. Other states have done it. We can do it here in Hawaii.
And do you think that you could be, as one person, make a change?
Absolutely. Having experience working with people in the community to network, negotiate, and work together for a common cause, I have the experience and the energy to help unify the Hawaii's House of Representatives to make the vote of District 39 count for so much more.
All right. We're about to wrap up our conversation, so just really quick, if you want to say something as your final thought.
Yeah. Thank you, Alana, and thank you so much, District 39, for tuning in. Thank you, State of Hawaii, for tuning in. It would be an honor to serve you, to prioritize you, and to be a servant for your family, for your keiki, for your kapuna. Please, don't just vote. Please also do more. Please donate into the campaign. Please pick up your phone and call everybody you know who lives in Eva Beach and Waipahu, and let them know Elijah Perick's running for office.
Thank you. We have one minute left.
I've been a social studies teacher for over 20 years. I've taught thousands of kids that live in our district. And every single year, one of the most important lessons I teach them is the responsibility of voting. And it's always difficult to see in our elections about how many people don't vote. So, I would encourage everyone that's watching, make sure that you register, and if you are registered, to make sure that you vote.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. Mahalo to our guests, candidates for House District 39, Democrat Corey Rosenlee and Republican Elijah Perick. Next week, we will feature two Maui County Council races, Naraboon and Nohe Uuhodgens. They face off the Makowal District, and Tom Cook and Robin Knox are set to square off for the South Maui District. So, please join us then. I'm Alana Hugh for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Aloha and ahoiho.